As we go forward today, you know, obviously, this is a very sad day, you know, for this council and for all the people in Virginia Beach. Good government depends on good people to do the right things. And I think we all agree that Louis Jones was the epitome of the right man for the right season that helped guide this city. But once again, we will continue to find ways to honor him, remember him, and, you know, let me put it this way, he's going to be missed. Let me just give you some thoughts about going forward today. You know, we do have to have that discussion, and I think maybe during council discussions and comments in a little bit here. We have a discussion on how to go forward with finding a placeholder. Unfortunately, that's an item of business that we're going to have to contend with, you know, in terms of at least getting the ball rolling going forward. And the other thing with the permission of council, once we get into informal, right after the invocation, moment of silence, but after the mayor's presentations and resolutions and recognition, you know, I'm going to suggest that, you know, we solicit or request comments from the council members individually on Louis and reflections, as well as we will also ask, you know, people that work intimately with him over time, too, and that would be the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. So with your permission, you know, going forward, you know, at least for today, you know, at least, you know, hopefully that's something that we could do. You know, once again, our foundation has been rocked. And, you know, the thing is, you know, it's a sad day. Okay, but going forward, Mr. Manager, we have a, we're going to be talking about some planning items?
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Bobby Taha will give a council update on the pending planning items that are forthcoming on your July 5th and July 12th council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, members of city council, I'll be providing the pending planning items for July 5th and July 12th. On July 5th, there are five planning items scheduled. The first item is by Hendrick's Family Dentistry, PC, at 737 Little Neck Road and District 8, formerly the Lynn Haven District. This proposal is to expand an existing nonconformity, the property is owned R5D, which is a residential zoning district, with an existing dentist's office that's on the property. The proposal is to expand the existing dentistry, and the Planning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval to the council. The applicant seeking to do a 533 square foot addition to the north side of the building, which will include examination rooms, small office and storage spaces. There is a minimum of 10 parking spaces that are required, and they can be met on site. And the conditions are recommended that include maintenance of the existing buffers and screening, as well as limiting the hours of trash pickup on the property so that it is compatible with the existing residential uses. There is no known opposition to this request, and this was on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission. Item number two is Eyes on You Artistry by Brianna Anis LLC in District 9, formerly Kimsville, at 1270 Diamond Springs Road, Suite 113. This is for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor, but specifically for microblading in the location. It is an 800-square-foot unit within the Diamond Springs Shops and Shopping Center along Diamond Springs Road. There is no proposed changes to the exterior of the building, and microblading is consistent with other personal service uses that are typically within a shopping center. Staff did read, received two letters of opposition from citizens concerned with the operations of a tattoo parlor that could potentially lead to inappropriate adult uses occupying other spaces in the shopping center. There were no speakers at the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission placed this on their consent agenda and recommended by eight to zero vote for approval. Item number three is by Alexis Morales Cruz at 3049 Barbary Lane in District 2, formerly Princess Anne. This request is for a conditional use permit for an in-home daycare in the Lake Placid As typical with in-home daycares, there is a limit for up to 12 children in the home. However, the applicant is not proposing to operate with up to 12 children. The number of children will be based on their approval from the state, which will also require them to have a certain number of employees that they can, to care for those children. There is ample area in the driveway for pickup and drop-off, and the backyard is fenced in for the outdoor play area. There was no known opposition, and this was on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission recommending approval on an eight to zero vote. Item number four is by the Hertz Corporation in District 6, formerly Beach, at 1940 Laskin Road, Suite 308. This is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle rental within the Regency Hilltop Shopping Center along Laskin Road. Hertz is proposing to occupy a 2,400-square-foot unit within the shopping center, and they plan on providing for rental up to 10 vehicles, limited to sedans, pickup trucks, and SUVs. They will not be permitted to rent box trucks or other commercial truck vehicles. They are only permitted, based on the conditions, 10 vehicles stored on the site. They are highlighted in blue, and they're located behind the existing shopping center building and those, and the parking spaces shown here to the north and to the west. There was no known opposition to this agenda item, and it was placed on the Planning Commission's consent agenda and recommended on an eight to zero vote for approval. The final item for July 5th is by Cheryl Scott in District 9, formerly Bayside, at 544 Independence Boulevard. This is a request for a tattoo parlor specifically for microblading within, or for the application of permanent makeup. There is an existing beauty salon located at the site, and they are proposing to provide the additional service for microblading. There is no, there is no proposed changes to the exterior of the building or signage, and with this as being an existing salon, as multiple salons have come through the process to obtain this additional service. There was no known opposition, and this was placed on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission by an eight to zero vote. On July 12th, there are six items that are scheduled for the city council hearing, which one of them includes a zoning ordinance text amendment for the energy storage facilities. Item number one is by Craig M. and Christie Kirby in District 5, formerly Beach, for a street closure of an unimproved portion of 631, adjacent, of an alley adjacent to 631 Vanderbilt Avenue. This is consistent with other street closures that have been approved in the Crowatan neighborhood, where this is a portion of the property that is essentially part of the backyard of the residence. The portion of the alley that's to be closed is approximately 533 square feet, and the typical conditions, including an easement for possible future stormwater needs, is required for this property to be closed. The viewers met on this issue and had no objections, and there was no known opposition, and by an eight to zero vote, the Planning Commission recommended approval. Item number two is by Victoria Coziel at District, I'm sorry, 901C Pacific Avenue, District 5, formerly Beach. This is for a two-bedroom short-term rental in the retreat by the Sea Condominiums at 9th Street and Pacific Avenue.
Yes, John.
I can't remember which of all these short-term rentals, you may know, but you may saw the same email that I think all council got about someone's been operating in a condo, short-term rentals, without going through the process. Is this this one?
It is not this one, sir.
Okay, can you just tell us which one that is when it comes up, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This applicant has confirmed that they are not currently advertised, and staff doing the research noted that the property was advertised, but it was removed on June 2nd. There were nine, there have been nine previous conditional use permits that have been approved for short-term rentals at this property. There was no known opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission placed this on their consent agenda with an eight to zero recommendation for approval. Item number three is by Long Creek LLC at 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 218, in District 6, formerly Beach. This is the item that was sent in the email, that was noted, that they stated that the property was previously operating as a short-term rental. Staff could not confirm through the host compliance software whether this property was listed or not, as the unit numbers are not always listed in the, in the software. There have been 11 conditional use permits that have been approved in this existing condominium. There were two letters of opposition that have been provided, with one SDR operator in the building having, stating their opposition to the application, noting that there are too many SDRs in the vicinity of, and in this property. The applicant has four other conditional use permits for short-term rentals in the building in units 110, 111, 210, and 212. The applicant was informed by staff that they did not have their annual zoning permit, and the applicant on, prior to the June 8th Planning Commission public hearing, obtained all the necessary permits to properly operate those units.
For the one in question, can't we determine whether or not they had filed any sales tax with the commissioner of revenue for that unit in question prior to its approval? Isn't that information that's publicly available?
I don't believe we're able to obtain that information.
Not how much revenue, but in fact that they did file and have a business license or the things for the property. I think that is public information I'd like, because I think I posed that question to the attorney, I think, and I asked him the question, if they were operating in violation of compliance with the property, despite the fact it's conditional use permit, was that legitimate grounds to deny? And I'd just like to be educated.
Yes, sir, we will, we will ask the question if the, if we can be provided that information for the specific unit.
While we're on that, can I put a question on it? If that's information that is not yet available because the law hasn't changed, is that, is that possible? Is this, is this information that we tried to get a change in the law to permit?
I believe that the-
The commissioner didn't reveal that kind of information?
Yes, that was part of the request. I think Mr. Moss has noted that we can ask to see if a business license has been issued to the property. I believe we can get that information.
Even without the change?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so?
We will, we will obtain that information, and we will put that in the agenda request form with that, with the item when it comes forward.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Staff spoke to the applicant on June 14th, and they noted that they were not operating nor advertising their property for a short-term rental. Because we were not able to discern whether it was operating or not, we had the applicant put in writing that they stated that they were not operating.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Is that statement, a statement of, as, "At this moment, I am not operating," or is, "And I have not operated it for a period of..."
My understanding was at that moment, they were not operating. So, we will, we will provide the information that was provided to us as we reached out to the applicant. We will tell you, we will tell the council that we, staff will do check-ins when the first, and the application comes in, before it goes to Planning Commission, before it comes to city council at this, before we-
Did you make no investigation of any past history of use?
We-
Even if it was last week?
So-
That's my point, is I'm just questioning the usefulness of whether at any given point in time, it's operating when it's been operating in the recent past.
Bobby, I think you're saying you do, but the host compliance software does not drill down to the units or some of the-
That is correct.
I got that part, but that's a kind of separate issue for these, these particular units. But I'm just trying to say, if as a, if the way we are regulating these is with questioning from investigators of, "Are you now operating this as a short-term unit?" I'm just saying, or if the, we're only checking, it's of a limited usefulness, that's all. My only point is, if we're asking people to make statements, it would be good to know what the history of the use of it as short-term property. If not, I don't mean history forever, but at least the recent history.
Yes, sir, typically staff will, we will have that in the staff report on whether they had previously operated. And then, the reason why I bring up the touchpoints with the applicant is that we want to make sure that they are trying to come into compliance as they move forward. I will tell you that there are two of these on this, on this agenda that have posted again, oh, I think it's this next one that's coming up, have posted again prior to them obtaining approval, and then they've removed it very recently. It's, we try our best to let them know that they are, they need to be in compliance, and they will be in front of the city council to answer for those when they are not operating appropriately.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir. Item number four is by Thomas LaPresti at 425 21st Street. This property was actually re-advertised today on June 21st. We contacted the applicant today, and they noted to us that they have removed their listing as of this afternoon. The software does not update in real time, we will check it again tomorrow, and prior to the agenda request form being sent in for the council's review, to see if they truly did pull their listing down. The property is a four-bedroom short-term rental unit within an existing single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1960. Four parking spaces are required, and four parking spaces are provided along the alley in the rear. The property is located within the residential parking permit program, which limits the ability for them to park in the public way and to obtain residential parking permits at the site. There was no known opposition at the time, and it was placed on the consent agenda by the Planning Commission. Item number five is by Craig and April Dean at 515 20th Street, District 6, formerly Beach. This is for a two-bedroom short-term rental unit for the rear unit of a duplex that was constructed in 1972. The unit is not currently advertised, however, the listing was recently removed on June 12th. Vehicle access to the unit is provided along the improved alley on 20th and a half street, where there are two parking spaces are located. Similar to the previous application, this is located in the residential parking permit program boundaries, which limits their ability to obtain residential and guest parking passes, and requires them, with the conditional use permit, to have their parking available on-site for their proposed tenants. At the time of the Planning Commission hearing, there was no known opposition, and was on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission. Item number six is a text amendment to amend Section 111 of the city's zoning ordinance to add terms related to energy storage facilities, as well as add energy storage facility as a conditional use permit in the I-1 and I-2 industrial districts. This item was, was deferred by city council on the May 17th agenda in order to obtain additional information. And with that, that is the last of the items.
Okay, any other questions for Bobby? Bobby, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, going forward, if I could do a course correction, consulting with the city manager, you know, obviously, you know, filling, you know, the vacancy, you know, is important, but it's also a personnel decision, and we do have it on the agenda, you know, for closed session to, you know, receive the proper legal advice and direction and, you know, come to a conclusion. So if it's okay, we will defer that conversation until, you know, closed session. Any other things for the good of the order? Yes, Mr. Moss?
I just, we won't get into details, but I just want to let you know that Michael, the city manager, and economic development director, deputy city manager, all in one, we did meet with the alliance today, and we'll be coming back in another environment to give you the details of that. But I want to let you know that we did have that consensus meeting, but we got to put all the details to paper, so if we don't overspeak, but that did take place today, and it was a very fruitful discussion, and Michael and all the players had something constructively to give, and I think we got a good point.
And thank you, Mr. Moss. I was at the Wyans Board Meeting last week, and there were a number of favorable comments about the tenor and openness and communication with the liaisons and our folks representing us that really reflected positively on our city, so I just wanted to pass that on. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Ms. Wilkman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I hope everyone is doing well. Very briefly, I'd like to bring your attention to an ordinance that is a draft that's been placed at your desk, and this ordinance is to authorize the city manager to erect signs discouraging motorists from giving money to panhandlers. This is not a new topic, it's a topic that I've actually had discussions about, and I'm sure many of you have heard discussions about and have seen the increase in panhandling in our city. Panhandling is not illegal, but I think it's important for us to address the residents' concerns, the increasing number of people you see at our different locations who are panhandling. And I've seen the run of the gamut from people who are in need, because there are people who are actually in need, and they do need help. And then I have seen other instances where there are vehicles that go from place to place and drop people off. But the main concern that I hear from citizens is not safe for people to enter into traffic trying to obtain money. This concern is, we want to make sure that, number one, safety, people are being safe. And then, the other part is, if people do need help, that we direct them to the entities that we have within our city who are available to help. And so, you'll see the information on the ordinance, it's very simplistic in terms of discouraging people from giving money at these traffic areas, and directing people to call the appropriate number for assistance. This is a draft that's also modeled after the ordinance in the city of Norfolk, and I've seen similar signage and deterrents in the city of Chesapeake, and the city of Richmond as well. And so certainly take your time to look at it, offer your suggestions, your concerns. But I did want to bring this matter forward to finally address the concerns of people in our city about the increased numbers that we see panhandling throughout the city. If you have questions, certainly, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sabrina. Anybody else? Okay, Vice Mayor Wilson, if we can do the consent?
Kay ordinances. Number one is to ordnance, the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned property at 4th Street and Atlantic Avenue with Ocean View, Ocean Water LLC for one year, and four one-year renewal options with guard overflow parking. Anybody have a problem with that?
Is that the, is that the item, Amanda?
Sorry, say that.
Is it item one that we talked about?
Yes, it is, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On that item, in the agenda request form, and that's, this is my fault, because I've told my staff that the council doesn't like to hear public comment and then vote on the same day, so it actually reflects that the vote would occur at the next meeting. You legally can consider it tonight if you want, it's on your agenda, and in fact, if you don't, you'll need to defer it. But I just wanted to point out that there is a reference in the agenda request form that says that the vote would be at the next meeting. And I apologize for the confusion.
This is a piece of property we leased in the past.
Yes, I don't think it's controversial at all, I just wanted to make you aware that we had, that my staff, following my direction, had listed it, public hearing this week, vote the next.
Is everybody okay with moving forward, or if you have objection, we put it?
Well, my only objection is that the public read it, if they did read it, which you have to assume someone did, might have showed up thinking it was being deferred. So the better course of action is to defer it, unless there's some crisis about the expenditure or the agreement, only that someone in the public might have relied upon our own description.
The public notice in the paper only said-
Only said that it is for today. It did not talk about a meeting day.
I know, but if someone reads the agenda, the full agenda, they do see that, and I'm not saying what they do or don't know, I'm just saying you never know until you vote, and someone says, "Well, I read that, and I didn't show up because I saw it was going to be next week." I'm just, if you're comfortable with that, I'm just saying, unless there's a crisis.
Is there a problem with the less C, if we defer it?
I don't believe that it is. I think they were also under the impression that it would be at the next meeting.
We can defer it till July 5th?
Yes.
I think that's the best part.
Okay.
And again, it's, I apologize to the council.
It's a consent to defer.
I strongly would suggest we do that. I think there, I think there are some people that have raised objections, I've heard them. But I don't know whether, I don't know whether they're going to show up at the meeting.
Well, we'll-
Just know if they advertise something.
Number two, ordinance to increase and realign certain parking fees according to the resort area mobility plan.
Can I just have a question?
Yes, Ma'am.
With the holiday, was it time to ask questions? There are just so many different points of this, it gets a little confusing for me, and I know one of the newscasts that I was watching this morning, it really did sound pretty confusing because there are so many different parts of it, but I'm going to talk only about the Sandbridge rate change. Is it, am I reading this right, that somebody pays a $4 fee, and then they have unlimited daily entries and exits, they can go and come all day on just one $4, and is it set up so they can do that?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Yes, that's correct. Ma'am, that is $4, you pay it with the meter, and you can come and go as you please throughout the day.
Because I think the person this morning read it as $4 an hour, but I think that he just was reading wrong, but, but $4 is all day, and you can leave and come back.
That's correct.
And that works well. And I believe that somebody told me that my request, that the program to allow over 65 would, is going to be in effect.
That's correct.
We don't have to vote on that? That doesn't have to be included in this?
It does not.
Okay. And you will be putting that out in a, some fashion that it's available? I know people have to apply for it and so forth, but that applies for anybody in the city, any city citizen 65 and older could apply for that permit to be able to park at Little Island.
That's correct, and we will do a major PR rollout of all of these programs, depending on the outcome tonight.
And that will be one of them, even though it's not listed here.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is everybody okay with consent? Okay, number three is to provide, I think that's going to be pulled.
Correct.
Number four, that's going to be pulled, there's two speakers.
Pull. It's not a con- Disagreement is certainly.
Number five is the compensation for city council appointees. I don't think we have any speakers on it.
We have one speaker.
Well, yes. Okay. Everybody okay with that?
I am, but I have some remarks at the end.
Okay, number six, the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the condition regarding closing a street dedication adjacent to Norfolk Southern Corp., right away, and a private road northeast of Tolliver Road. Am I okay? Number seven, ordinance to appoint three viewers for one-year terms beginning July 1st, 2022, to review East Street or alleys proposed to be closed. Number eight, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of, A is Treasure Canal, and the other one is Lake Rudy. Are we okay with both of those?
No problem.
Number nine, the ordinance to accept and appropriate $80,000 of American Rescue Plan, ARPA money for the Commonwealths, to the FY 2021-22 Department of Human Services Operating Budget for Information Technology Infrastructure.
I just have one question for the city manager. If we, I would just, it's just me, I would like to know a little bit more about, has we spent the money? Why is the public better off after the investment? This tells what we're investing in, but it doesn't tell us what the outcome of the investment is. I'd like to know what we can't do now that we can do with this money, and why citizens should-
should care that we invested it. Thank you.
Under planning, number one is T-Mobile Campus East Community Association for a modification conditions regarding communication towers. It's 5642 Campus Drive, District Four, formerly District Two, Kempsville.
I haven't heard anything about it, no opposition.
Number two, Audubon Car Wash LLC Brenneman Farm Retail Associates for conditional use permit regarding a car wash facility at 4577 South Plaza Trail, District One, formerly District Two, Kempsville.
No, no opposition.
Number three, Suite Management Franchising LLC Hilltop Square Investors LLC for conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 550 First Collina Road, District Six, Beach. Number four, this is the ordinance to add Section 209.5 to delete Section 242.1 and amend Section 901 of the city zoning ordinance regarding tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments as permitted uses in B2 zoning. Mr. Belucci, did you want to say something?
I would, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Of course, you and I know that the, this ordinance was initiated to support the industry. It was to initiate it to make things easier for those who are in this business. But since we proposed it, we've learned from stakeholders and from people in the industry that actually it could have unintended consequences. And you and I spoke, are in complete agreement, and I'm sure the council would be too, we need to look at it more carefully, and, and talk with more, a more complete scope of people in the industry. So, I recommend a definite deferral.
Everybody okay with that?
Thank you for your heavy lifting, thank you.
All right.
All right, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exceptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Public contract, discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to the Section 2.23711A29, East Coast Surfing Championship. Legal advice, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal services by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.23711A8, and that would be for the counsel vacancy. And then personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining resignation, or specific public purpose, or specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A1, and that would involve the following three items, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies. Second, the council vacancy, and three, the real estate assessor. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
If I vote of 10 to zero, you have recessed into closed session.
Okay, we are recessed into seconds.
10 to zero, stand.